Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the July 1st Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We have a busy agenda tonight, so we're going to jump right in. Madam Secretary, can you call the roll, please?
Yes. Irma Johnson?
Here.
Timothy Lusher?
Here.
Tom McDaniel?
Here.
Reed Mills?
Here.
Michael Nichols?
Here.
Darryl Sanderson?
Here.
Charles Stewart?
Here.
Brent Swager?
Here.
William May? Four on the add to the table. Seven.
All right. Very good.
Eight on the day.
Okay. So we have the minutes that were sent out to everybody. Were there any amendments that you saw? Hearing none? Consider the minutes adopted? Next, we've got the payment of the bills. We have a motion to... We have an amended list from the packets that were originally sent out. There were some additions to that that you'll see. So is there a motion to approve the bills that's listed?
A motion to approve the bills.
Mr. Lusher?
Second.
Mr. Stewart? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we're going to have a brief comprehensive plan update.
Good evening, everybody. Work continues. The fiscal court approved a slightly amended draft of the goals and policies last week, and we expect it to be on the agenda for the Board of Commissioners next week. So hopefully, the goals and policies will then be adopted and keep us on track to continue working on the remaining text of the plan, which has all been templated and, fingers crossed, ready to bring that back to this body in August if all things go smoothly.
And I'll just mention that next week during our regularly scheduled meeting time, we're going to have a work session, and we're... The planning commission will have a work session to review and go over what's been drafted up to this point, just so we can get a better understanding of the background on it and the content that's eventually going to be put before us for consideration. All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary, can you call the first item of business?
Yes. Continuation of public hearing. Amendment McNally is requesting a zoning map amendment from two-dwelling District RD to limited commercial District CL where the property located at 604 Taylor Avenue. The property is more specifically identified as PVA map number 062-13-02-002.00. This is a city item.
Okay. So this was a public hearing that we had last time. It was tabled, and so is there a motion to remove from the table?
Salute.
Mr. Lusher?
Second.
Second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So we can begin, if anybody chooses to, to make a motion for approval or denial. And if it's seconded, then we'll have an opportunity for discussion, and you can talk about any of the points that you want to make on this case.
You can adopt this, Secretary.
Oh. Okay. I'm sorry. Let's begin with... We have a summary that was put into our packet, and so do I have a motion to adopt the summary?
Don't move.
Mr. Nichols?
Second.
Mr. Lusher? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. I was ahead of myself there, so let's see if anybody has a motion on approval or denial. Oh, I'm sorry.
I need to fact.
Okay. Let's jump into findings of fact. Does anybody have any findings of fact that they'd like to propose?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to accept the staff findings as findings of fact on page 10.
So the four that are listed there?
Yes.
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Second.
Ms. Johnson, I think, beat you to the bunch. All right. Can you call the vote?
Yes. Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
All right. Are there any additional findings of fact that anyone would like to put out there? Not hearing any additional ones. We'll move into... Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the request for zoning map amendment from RD to CL for the property located at 604 Taylor Avenue, PVA 062-1302-002.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Lusher, second by Mr. Stewart, to approve this. And I'll just remind Commissioners, just so everybody can hear, is that when you speak, make sure you turn on your microphone. Thank you. Let's open it up for discussion. Anybody want to bring anything up about the case, about the findings of fact? Hearing no more discussion, I guess we will... Please call the roll.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yeah.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion unanimous.
You can call our second item of business.
Continuation of public hearing. Marissa Swiston is requesting a zoning map amendment from two-dwelling District RD to limited commercial District CL where the property located at 612 Taylor Avenue. The property is more specifically identified as PVA map number 062-13-02-004.00. This is also a city item.
Okay. So is there a motion to take this off the table?
Salute.
Mr. Lusher?
Second.
Mr. Mills? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. At this point, we're looking for any findings of fact.
The chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the summary and to adopt the findings of fact from staff.
Mr. Lusher, motion? Second by... Mr. Stewart? Please call the roll.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yeah.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion passed. unanimous.
Okay. Are there any additional findings of fact? Entertainer motion on the case?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the zoning map amendment and sentence to the commissioners for 612 Taylor Avenue from RD to CL, property described as PVA 062-1302-004.
I'll second. All right. We have a motion by Mr. Lusher, second by Mr. Bellz, to... For approval. Suspend it up for discussion. Okay. Hearing none. When you're ready, please call the roll.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion passed. unanimous.
All right. Thank you. All right. So we have a number of public hearings on our list here by our bylaws. We're only supposed to hear two of them, so I want to see if there's a motion to suspend the bylaws.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the bylaws so we can hear the remaining public hearings for tonight.
Second. Motion by Mr. Stewart, second by Mr. Lusher. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. So entering our new business under public hearings. Call the first item.
Public hearing. Proposed text amendment to the City of Frankfurt zoning ordinance to amend Article 2.11.10 regarding utilization of alternate regulation for zoning map amendment in accordance with KRS 100.2111.
So beginning of the staff report on us.
I'll be brief. This has gone through zoning update committee, as I know they're on the staff report, and they've recommended approval. What the amendment actually does is establish that we use the alternate regulation for zoning map amendment, referencing KRS 100, which are our enabling statutes for everything we do. What it essentially allows is for a zone change if no interested party or legislative body asks for it to go be heard by the legislative body, then in 30 days, the planning commission's recommendation becomes final. So anything contentious, anything like that, people still have every bit of opportunity to request that a zone change go to the respective legislative bodies. But as I like to say, as I've kind of explained to the zoning update committee, what essentially it allows us to do is for the easy ones to be even easier, because if there's no, you know... If nobody's fired up about it, it doesn't have to wait and take three, four months going to legislative body. It can go ahead and get done. So I think it's just a common sense way for us to make the easy ones easier.
One of the main differences is that the appeal time is cut depending on what is involved.
I believe so.
Okay. So one of the other things it does is cuts the appeal time down to the time when this...
On this, you've got it tagged enough under 2.1.1.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff on this?
Is there a reason from 30 to 21 I'm not disagreeing? Is that statute for all some of the regulations or...
Yeah, it's statute. We're adopting verbatim. Okay.
Yeah. I guess there are a number of cases that we hear that this just would help expedite their approval, get their projects moving.
Sure.
We're going to open it up to public testimony. If anybody's interested in the subject and would like to speak on it, please raise your hand. Is there anybody? On this case? Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, okay. So, I mean, you want to have... You want to talk about this? Okay. So you're going to have to be sworn in. You can come up. Is there anybody else? Okay. Can you swear in, please?
Do you swear in a form that the testimony you're about to give us is the truth, the horture, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you. Could you state your name for the record? My name is Margaret O'Donnell, and I live at 307 Hermitage Drive here in South... Or in South Frankfurt. I'm not really familiar with... I get short cutting and making things that are easy go through more, you know, readily. But as I have addressed with other people, I think there is a serious issue of lack of notice coming from the planning commission about meetings and what the agendas are. And this just seemed like this was the perfect time when you're talking about moving easy cases through and when there's no public comment to let you all know that there is something that is failing in the notification process. And I'm a lawyer, so I know that's an open records and notice problem. And we hope for the citizens of this county that that can be rectified in some way so that the people who do have something to say or something to add to this conversation know when it's going to happen and when to show up. So, thank you.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Okay. That's the only person... Only public comment we had. We have an opportunity to close... Cease testimony, close the hearing, and take action.
Make motion to close testimony and to take action on this amendment.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So motion to approve?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed text amendment to amend Article 2.11.10. Yes, that.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Lusher? Mr. Stewart, second. All right. Let's open up for discussions. Anybody have any concerns? Anything we want to talk about on this one? Hearing none. I think we're ready for vote. The motion is for approval. Please call the roll, please.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion passes. Seven to one.
Okay. Can you call the next item, please?
Public hearing. Proposed text amendment to amend Chapter 155.066 of the Franklin County Code of Ordinance to establish the addition of Chapter 155.151 Rural Heritage Mixed Use District HD. This is a county item.
All right. So beginning of the...
Do you swear in a form that the testimony you're about to give us is the truth, the horture, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right. Good evening, Commissioner. Do have in my hand here last-minute revisions, mostly clerical, I want to approach, and I'm just going to leave these out for you all to take a look at. Content, pretty much the same, just some clerical things. Actually, it might be easier if you just take them all past. All right. So staff has been working on this thing since back in February. Staff did some research, consulted stakeholders, and then kind of formulated the text amendment with its basic framework. And at that point, we brought it before the zoning update committee, where it really got some more meat on the bones and some teeth to it as well. This is... The impetus behind this is to enable a project that's in the pipeline. This is one of the last key pieces holding it up in order for it to proceed onward. So because that staff is recommending approval, and I hope that she will tonight, we... Has been thoroughly vetted. It's gone through zoning update committee, professional stakeholders, and community stakeholders as well have been consulted, and I think it's turning out pretty good. Hope you all will agree, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
I'll begin. So this is the creation of a new zoning category, correct?
Correct.
And part of the intention is to... For historic preservation in addition to rural types of development?
It could be... Well, so although it does call it rural heritage mixed use district, that's just kind of county nomenclature. All of our zones have that rural word plugged in there. So this could have a rural form, could be suburban. I don't really imagine it applying in any urban settings. Also, speaking to applicability, it will be highly limited. We don't want these popping up everywhere. It's going to have a pretty high threshold for it to be applied somewhere, and because of that, I would only imagine it being utilized a handful of times.
Additional questions?
Yeah. I've got to follow up with that. So that's one of my concerns. I know...
Can you turn your mic, please?
Let me see if I've got it. Thanks. There we go. Actually, that's better. So one of my concerns, is it being used? I know... Understand there's a current project that this is needed to have and to allow for all the different uses. But as we've seen in the past with some of our good intentions, we've had scope creep, and they've been unintended in other locations. Is there limitations? I understand there's strict, you know, strict guidelines to this. Is there any way to limit it even further to a specific piece of property, or does that need to be blanketed?
I mean, if you all wanted to amend tonight to strict it... Make it more strict and limit it further to a single location, I suppose you all have the ability to do so. As I said, I don't see this being widely utilized. It's going to have... You're going to... If you read the criteria for eligibility, you're going to have to have something historic on your property for it to protect, and that alone is going to eliminate a plethora of other sites for it to be applied to. So I think by its nature, it's going to be very limited.
As I said, unintended consequences, which leads to my other two questions. First, legal. Would we be able to limit it to a single property, or is that not possible?
It's possible, but it's also possible there would be spots on it.
Okay. That's my question. Under paragraph three, section B, can you define vicinity? Because that's one of my biggest concerns.
You under section C eligibility?
No, I'm under section... Sorry. Section D, three, sub-paragraph B. And it's third sentence down toward the end. In design of new construction in the vicinity. What defines the vicinity?
Well, I guess it is somewhat subjective, but vicinity in my mind would be either immediately on the site or adjacent to.
So adjacent's my problem with it. Limiting... Changing vicinity to on property, because in vicinity puts restrictions on neighboring properties. Does that make sense?
I think it does. Yep.
Okay. Would you have a problem changing vicinity to on property?
And then... Could you explain your concern?
Meaning as it's written, whether it could be... Whether it's... Would be intended for this project were not a future project. The way it's written, it's very open-ended to where a neighbor could or an individual could apply for this designation, but then affect their neighbor's uses of their property. Because the way this is written, it says in the vicinity that this would supersede a neighboring piece of property. And so therefore, either most likely devalue that property. So we can't... We can't press... Pass one zone for one piece of property to affect someone else's.
I understand.
I agree.
So, I mean, let me just follow up on that discussion. Is this... I mean, this would only really... It would only affect the property that would be under the zoning classification, correct?
Correct.
So if an adjacent property was something else, they wouldn't have these limitations?
Correct. It might... If it's in a different zone, it wouldn't apply.
Still in the vicinity, I'd rather it's a on property, to clarify.
I think the intent there was if this were to occur in a place where it had multiple parcels that it were subject to, that we'd want it to kind of function as a single district. So I think that might have been why that word was put in there. But the project that we do have in mind is, I believe, on a single track. So it might not apply in this case, but I could see where you're going at in future cases.
I'm just trying to, yeah, solve us a problem later down the road. The only other one I have is may just be a technical revision. The paragraph below that, sub-paragraph C, is there a reason it... The paragraph reads, "The planning commission chairperson designated will review..." Designate will review. Should it just be just the planning commission reviews the development plan, because that's generally how we...
Designate would be staff, so it would give staff the ability to make a determination if it was close enough.
Okay. So designate staff. Can we have it read just the planning commission or staff? And that's all I've got.
Yeah. And we had a lot of discussion about that one.
May I make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
With regard to vicinity, why don't you... You could leave vicinity, but then specify unless located in another zone or another designation.
Could it be... My problem with that, counsel, is that it's a different property owner. It could be in the same zone or a...
I see your point.
It... Yeah. It comes down to ownership rights.
Then withdraw my suggestion?
I think I'm going to hold my comment there. Any other questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that is interested in speaking about this item? We have several people, so I guess we're going to have to swear. All of you, if you could stand and raise your hand.
Stand and raise your hand. Do you swear in a form that the testimony...
Need you to stand up, please. Anybody that's interested in speaking?
Oh. Do you swear in a form that the testimony you're about to give us is the truth, the horture, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. I guess... Who wants to go first? Yep. All right.
Hello, Commissioners. Good to see you tonight. I don't have a...
Could you state your name, please?
Pardon? Oh, I'm Jane Julian. I live at 1915 Noble Road. And I don't have a written statement tonight, but I'll just tell you that as I've read, Ben Judah gave me a rough draft of the staff report, and as I read it, it sounds like one of the best things to happen in Franklin County in my lifetime, if not before. This real recognition of the absolute importance of historic preservation is such a big deal. I mean, I just can't even describe what a big deal it is. I know all of you know people and families in this county who've been working for decades to save land, natural resources, and protect old buildings, and many of the buildings are already on the National Register, but there are many that are not. And this is the most positive and encouraging realization that this kind of historic preservation is so important and gives it a lot of publicity. I mean, if this rural historic preservation rural thing gets in the zoning regs, then it'll be even more noted by everybody, by the public, by everybody who wants to do business in Frankfurt. And I think it will be one of the... One of the things that continues to make Franklin County such a beautiful and important place to live. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Carlton?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Carlton, and as many of you know, I'm a local history and preservation advocate and currently member of the Comprehensive Advisory Committee. I wholeheartedly endorse this text amendment. Franklin County has few, if any, historic preservation policies in the current zoning code. And though this text amendment will serve a specific purpose in the near future, it was born out of a severe inadequacy in the current zoning code, one that contributed to the loss of one of the county's most historic properties and structures. to the loss of one of the county's most historic properties and structures. That zoning inadequacy effectively sets out in policy that the county would rather see a significant historic property threatened by development pressure succumb to that pressure in favor of new development than allow mixed, otherwise incompatible uses that collectively could create a revenue generating heritage tourism destination that would instead protect and enhance the historic property and promote tourism and public education of our history while allowing for some of that development pressure to be realized. This text amendment seeks to remedy that inadequacy. If it is passed, we can begin to intelligently think about other historic properties in the county endangered by development pressure now or in the future and be given some leeway to be creative with how we approach both preservation and development of those properties by allowing development that can benefit our economy while also protecting a heritage that is too fast being lost, especially without available tools in our zoning code that can help protect them. And with that, I ask for your support with the text amendment. Thank you all. Any questions?
All right, thank you. All right, I'll give one last chance to somebody else in the audience that would like to speak on this. All right. Motion to close the testimony.
Yes, motion to close testimony.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So this is, I guess this is how I'd like to proceed on this, is have a motion on the copy that was sent out or given to us today. If there's any, we talked about some potential changes, so we'll have an opportunity to talk through them and a vote to approve on-
Make a vote.
Good.
Close a public hearing.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll close the public hearing with all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for the reminder. All right, so we'll have a motion on this amended and then we'll talk through some of the changes, like the ones that we're talking about.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, Brent. I'd like to make a motion to approve the second draft that we received tonight with amendments discussed with staff. Specifically, section D, sub-paragraph three, sub-paragraph B, changing the nomenclature of vicinity to on property and C below it, changing chairperson or designate to just or staff.
Mr. Chairman, so vicinity, what was that to property?
To on property.
On property. Okay. And then the last one, just chairperson to staff?
Yes.
So it would be, it would read the planning commission or staff?
Or staff.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Lusher.
Second.
A second by Mr. Stewart. All right, it's open for discussion. Anything else that anybody wants to bring up? Okay, so call the roll. Motion is to approve with the, with the, with the changes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right. Very good. All right, we'll move on to item number three under the, under the public hearings.
Public hearing, the city of Frankfurt staff is requesting approval of a text amendment to Article 17 of the City of Frankfurt's zoning ordinance for the purpose of amending and adopting design guidelines for the special capital SC district.
All right, we're gonna begin with staff reports. In a moment.
Thank you. Yes, so what we have forwarded to you has been quite a long time coming. We have been working with a firm called Design, Designing-
Here, I need you to- Oh, Swager, do you swear to affirm that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the truth and the truth, so help you God?
I do. This is the third and final set of design guidelines associated with our three historic zoning districts. As I mentioned in the staff report, the special historic and central business district guidelines were adopted respectively in 2016 and 2018. And it's taken us until now, we've been working on this for probably the last year. And we did, we did do some outreach. Our consultant also got their, their contact information out to people of all sorts and talked individually in addition to the public outreach we did and some of the survey work we did with peoples on sort of all sides of, of the situation. And that leads us to what we've brought you now, which is a new set of design guidelines. One of our main, I won't say our, our main goals, but one of the things that, that we all agreed from a staff point of view, that the two existing guidelines do a very good job of is making it pretty simple to figure out for a particular project in that district, whether it's a maintenance project, administrative approval, or it has to go to the board because our previous regs in Article 17, which we're omitting, could, could make that a bit loosey-goosey and things can get interpreted different by staff if staff changes. And so we wanted to make sure that nothing else, that this was bringing, you know, an ease of use and clarity to it. They are, however, fairly lengthy, but some of that is also because we felt strongly about trying to use them as well to educate people about what the pieces and parts of historic homes and that kind of stuff are. So we wanted to include lots of good pictures and diagrams and things like that without making it any more than necessary a, a novel for people to read because most folks just wanna know what they have to do, do their project. This, this whole work, just as an overview, is part of our participation in the certified local government program, which is why we have historic districts and we strive to meet those standards from the Secretary of the Interior, which also allows folks in those districts to apply for state and federal tax credits, which our community is fairly active in doing. And that's what we have. And I have Ms. Berenberg here, the city historic preservation officer as well, if you have any questions for her either. Am I missing anything?
I did. Is it your testimony that appropriate statutory notice lies at this hearing so that the public-
Yes, sir.
Could you talk a little bit, a little bit more in detail on the public engagement that went into this effort? Public meetings, individual meetings with residents or landowners?
So we kicked off the process, if memory serves me correctly, with an online survey through frankly speaking KY.com, which is the city's public engagement hub. For most of the time when we're doing any survey work, particularly if it's survey work that doesn't have a consulting team on it, you know, for things like, say, the comp plan we're working on now, we have a consultant team that set up our own project specific website to do these things. But for other, just general city public input, we use that engagement hub as the kind of clearinghouse. So we did that. City staff went to a public meeting with various stakeholders at the Presbyterian Church back here. And then we kind of put out information where the consultant's contact info could be gotten and people could reach out to him to talk about what they would like to see in the proposed guidelines, what's good and bad and indifferent about the current ones and that kind of stuff, so we could really get a feel for what people liked and didn't like, while also trying to keep as much as we could to, to the standards and the uniqueness that the South Frankfurt neighborhood holds, which is that it's a diverse neighborhood, both architecturally and otherwise. Am I missing anything?
No, we may want to mention that the consultant did reach out to us specifically to those people who had indicated on the survey that they wanted to be able to make more information.
Yes, on the survey, we, we asked folks to respond and let us know if they wanted to be contacted, I forgot about that, to have some more direct input in the process. And so he, he did that.
Can I ask any questions of staff?
Well done, by the way, this is thorough. But doubles in details always. You mentioned maintenance. So where do you draw the line between general wear and tear maintenance and actual physical repair? Because it seems like every certain instance in here requires staff approval if it's strictly interpreted. So my shutter falls off in a windstorm. Can I put it back up?
Sure.
If it breaks in the windstorm, can I fix it?
Sure.
Okay. That's how this reads, I can't. I've gotta get your approval for each of those. Shutter is right here. Repair of existing historic shops, staff approval. So I mean, I'm talking about, you're not here, someone else here, how strict could this get for just general upkeep of a historic, not, well, a house in the South Frankfurt district? I don't wanna make, I want to keep the historic present, the historic integrity of the district, but also make it too, not too onerous on the actual owners, especially-
Sure, and so we already in the historic district will typically process a zoning permit, which is like our simplest permitting process. It's literally a one-sheet form and just tells us what you're doing. There are a lot of things that in the historic district, we do require that minimal staff review just to make sure that you kind of know the requirements. Things like gutters.
Right.
Windows. What would normally for most houses be a, a maintenance activity. Because we have standards for those things, we'd like people to come in and get a zoning permit just so we can ask the questions. Okay, are you putting back up what was there? Or if you're doing something different, does it meet the guidelines? And if so, good deal, here's your permit, roll on.
Okay.
And there are other things that are still a maintenance activity and we don't require a permit on or not, but some of those, because we have specific standards in these districts, we just want an opportunity to, to focus on. And that has less to do with trying to give people a hard time, is to just avoid someone making a mistake that we then catch later.
Right.
Which is particularly problematic with historic stuff because many times, once something's gone, there's, it's gone, right?
Right.
If it's an old window or an original copper gutter or something, sometimes replacing them, it may not be possible at all. So you end up with, you know, other replacements.
So I completely agree with you. I just, like, it goes to the details of where do we, where is that line drawn of, I need to get a, I need to inform the city, I'm going to do this, or it's necessary, or it's a minor. I didn't notice, but there was a lot of pages. Aesthetics, yes, landscaping was addressed. Simple painting of your door, is that a requirement?
We do not regulate paint.
Okay.
With the exception of painted masonry. If you are on painted masonry in the historic districts, all three of them, then generally speaking, we don't want you to pay.
Okay. My question is clarifications. Thanks.
Anything else?
I have a quick question. Do you by chance have the map of the special capital district and the other two districts? And it does not include South Frankfurt, is that correct?
The, the other two districts?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, correct. They are generally speaking on the other side of the line. I think there might be a piece of one of the national districts that jumps across the river. But our local districts, the special historic district is specifically the largely residential portion of downtown next to the central business district, which is just what it sounds like, the largely commercial area of downtown.
Right.
There's, there's, there's some parcels, particularly along Lewis and Ann Street that are not in either of the local historic districts. And then the special capital district, by and large, is greater South Frankfurt. So the Second Street corridor is not included in that. Taylor Avenue is not included in that.
Why is that?
I-
I'm just curious for the record.
I don't know. I was not here when the district was created. I know over the years, there's been conversations about either shrinking it or growing it. And people feel, you know, very strong one way or the other on that. But it is a good question because it's one of those areas that, and we've talked a lot about this, as we look towards rewriting of our development code, that Taylor Avenue is another good example of an older, very urban section of neighborhood that doesn't have the same zoning as the rest of South Frankfurt. And that can create problems when people try to reinvest.
Exactly.
Because it has that suburban bulk density and height requirements that are different from the rest of South Frankfurt that can make it hard. And we have a lot of those corridors within the city that we need to address. So it's a fair question.
There is, there is a map, I'm sure you saw it, but there is a map on page seven of the guidelines that shows in dark red the properties that are within the special capital district. Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Carlton? All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak about this item? I don't see him. Motion to, in the public testimony. And-
Roll for a motion.
Yep.
I'd like a motion in public testimony and also to, findings of fact, or can we just adopt this?
Yeah, we don't need findings of fact.
Okay. And to adopt the proposed guidelines for special capital design district.
Second.
All right, for, for discussion, I guess I think we also, although it's not written that way on our agenda, is that we are going to have to also recommend approval to the changes in Articles 16 and 17 that were sent out to us.
I'd like to amend my motion to accept those changes.
Okay.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Lusher, second by Mr. Stewart. Is there any discussion about either the text amendment or the guidelines themselves? Okay, I think we're ready to call the roll on this.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion passes, unanimous.
Okay. So that'll go to the city commission for their consideration. All right, we're on item number four. Can I call it, please?
Public hearing, Dewey and Candace Woods are requesting approval of a zoning amendment from rural residential RR to rural residential B, District RB, for a 0.759 acre property located on 110 and 112 Hawk Keegan Drive. This tract is more specifically identified as PVA map number 049-20-03-002.00 and 049-20-03-002.01. This is a county item.
So the other staff report, Mr. Stewart's gonna give it, I don't know if you can get some more?
Yes. Do you swear to affirm that the testimony you're about to give us the truth, the truth and the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, and good evening, Commissioners. The purpose of the requested rezoning is to allow the applicant to subdivide the property. The current zoning designation RR requires a minimum lot size of 1.5 acres, which precludes subdivision under the existing conditions. The RB district stipulates a minimum lot size of 0.21 acres. The current total area of the property is 0.759 acres, which does not meet the 1.5 acre minimum requirement under the RR zoning district. If the rezoning request is approved, the applicant intends to subdivide the property into two tracts, with tract one comprising 0.395 acres and tract two comprising 0.364 acres, thereby bringing the property into compliance with the applicable zoning and subdivision regulations. This zone change will correct a couple non-conforming issues, such as two residential structures on one lot and a substandard lot size. I respectfully request that my report be entered into the record, and I am here for any questions you may have.
Do you have questions?
Mr. Lusher. Really one, oh. Well done. That's extensive. But one, one quick question should be simple, just for clarification purposes on the record. Currently, this lot is one single lot, although it has two addresses, correct?
Yes.
With two pieces of property on it?
Yes.
And although it is, because the question is, was this piece of property grandfathered into RR since it is smaller than a standard RR designation?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, this is a grandfathered in. It was way before our zoning and regulatory- It was way before our zoning and regulations and subdivision regulations, yes.
And the intent of this is just to create two separate addresses with two separate pieces of property with two separate residences, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
What other questions? So, I mean, the location here is, it is a suburban location, actually. I mean, it's very close to town, it's not out in the county.
Yes, yes, and even the comprehensive plan designates it as suburban residential, yes.
Okay. Okay, I think that's all the questions. Thank you. All right, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak on this? We have one. Okay, why don't you come up and we'll get you sworn in?
Do you swear an affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, thank you, thank you. My name is Krista Jackson, and I live on 109 Hawkeegan Drive. My property is directly across from this property. So the question that I have is how is this going to affect my property value? Is it going to affect my property value? Breaking up a property into two properties, is that going to negatively affect my property value?
Well, I'm not sure that anyone up here can answer that question.
Is there an appraisal that has been sought and looked at to see what that looks like?
I don't think that's part of our process.
Okay, because that's our main question, is the property has a house and it has a structure that used to be a business, and it's a shotgun business next to a house and they share a driveway. And it is unkept. So I'm wondering, splitting that out into two, excuse me, how is that going to affect us? Because it sounds like it's going to really negatively affect our property value. And I bought at the height of COVID, so that is really going to affect me. So I'll write that on record, and I don't know if we can ask for that information. It would be great to know the current appraisal value and the split appraisal value.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you're telling me that there's a house on one lot? And what's on the other lot?
A shotgun building that is almost surrounded by cement, and they share a driveway between them, with a double car garage directly behind both properties.
But is it a commercial building or is it residential building?
There is no business being run there now.
Excuse me?
There's not a business being run there now, but formerly there was a business there. I understand somebody's living there now.
Living in the building?
Living in the building.
As a, as a residential lot?
Correct, and has sheets hanging up in the front at the very beginning of our street.
Okay, is there any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I did realize that I kind of got ahead of myself and that we should have seen that the applicant is here, if they wanted to say anything.
Well, you can correct that by allowing the applicant to speak. I'm here.
Do you want, if you want to come up and...
I may be able to...
Come on up here and we'll, and we'll get you.
Address some of her concerns, I don't know if I can or not.
Speak your name, please.
Dewey Woods.
Mr. Woods, do you swear an affirm that the testimony you're going to give tonight is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Did you have an opportunity to see the staff report?
I, I didn't see it.
Okay. Are you familiar with the recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
But to, to kind of answer her question, there's nobody living in the 112, and I actually have a business address there, so I do use that property at this point. But my intention is to make both of those functional residences, but when you've got all of those buildings to maintain on one track, that you can't, it doesn't increase the value of that home property to add a lot of money to the other buildings when they're not, when I can't sell one of them, if that makes any sense. But that's the whole, I mean, my intention is to spend some money on both of those places with it, with one of them being able, with, I may sell one of them. But they are both in disrepair right now, but it's, there's a lot of expense there that can't be recouped if I have to have both of those tracks, both of those properties on one track. If that makes any sense, I don't know. I mean, I think it will make the property values more to, I know it will for me to have two separate tracks than one building that may or not be used by a potential next owner.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I think it's like 1.3 something is the size of the tracks. Each one of them's going to be about the same size.
No, they're, they're, it's, it's like a three-quarter acre, fact total now.
The whole track?
The whole track is like a...
And you're going to divide it up to half, half and half?
Half of that, and I actually have, I have two separate PVA bills and two separate addresses there now.
Now, according to the property around there, will that equal the size of normal everybody else's tracks? Or is this going to make your track much smaller?
It won't make it much smaller than some, some of them are bigger. There are some 50-foot lots in, in Hawkeegan.
So it just kind of blends in?
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Okay, so I think we finished everybody that wanted to testify on this. Motion to close the public hearing. Adopt the staff report.
I'd like to, motion to adopt a closing, close the public hearing to adopt the staff report and to recommend for approval the zone change. Paper street.
So while you're doing this, remember we need findings of fact.
Oh, just want to do any findings of fact on, adopt a staff proposal, just do the findings of fact then, and then accept the staff findings as findings of fact. Second.
All right, Mr. Lusher, Mr. Stewart, a second. Can you call a roll?
Yes. Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Chairman Swiker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's see if there are additional findings of fact anybody would like to offer. Okay, hearing none. Consider motion. We have, we of course have an option of if we need to, and I'm not sure we'd need to, if we can table it and hear it next time, or we can make a recommendation this meeting.
Some more bookkeeping, so I'd like to go ahead and make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to submit for approval of the zone map amendment from Residential RR to Rural Residential BRB with 7.59 acre piece of property on 110 and 112 Hawkeegan Drive. Second.
All right, Mr. Lusher made a motion for approval, Mr. Stewart, a second. Call a roll, please.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Mike, Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Chairman Swiker?
Yes.
Motion passes, unanimous.
Sentence is approved. Okay. We are down to the last item of business under new business, so if you don't mind calling that, please.
In accordance with Article 1.09 of the Frankfurt Zoning Ordinance, Thomas and Michelle Schubert are requesting approval of a modification of standards of Article 15.022 of the Frankfurt Zoning Ordinance to allow the extension, extension, enlargement, or relocation of a non-conforming use on the property located at Fields Avenue to include the construction of a garage larger than the existing garage structure. The property is more particularly described as PBA map number 074-12-10-016.11, oh, it's 00, sorry.
Sure. So what brings us to this item today is that the Schuberts came to see me and needed extra room at their property for storage and that kind of thing. They have an existing garage on this tract, and then they live across the street. They wanted to build a new garage on that tract with that garage. Unfortunately, the peculiar thing is where there's no primary residence on the garage, that makes the garage itself the primary land use, which is a non-conformity. So enlarging or replacing that was going to be an issue, making the modification of standards necessary. One of the reasons that situation took place, as you read in my staff report, is likely because the parcel has never been served with water or sewer. So even if they wanted, because we, we talked early in the process, I said, well, perhaps you could put like a mother-in-law suite, and I can call it a residential use, in the garage, and they thought about that and then found out that connecting to sewer and water was going to be quite pricey, particularly sanitary sewer, when we reach out to the sewer department, so... Which is probably an explanation for why the property sat in the condition it is for so long, because you can't really do anything else with it besides have a storage building or a garage on it. I've recommended approval. The only thing I will change from my staff report is that I think I implied that the old garage would be demolished in replacement of the new garage, but they do intend to, to leave the existing garage there as well. But that doesn't change my recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So in terms of the sewer, you said it's really expensive to get to that. Do you know, like, how far away would they have to run this?
I have a map submitted from the sewer department in here somewhere. It looks like the closest sewer is on either intersection from either side of the property, either on Henry or over, I can't see on my map what that other street is. Blackburn. So they would have a pretty far run, and I can't measure from here, but I'm quite certain it would be long enough that it wouldn't even just be a lateral extension, it would be what the sewer department and Division of Plumbing would consider a main extension, which makes it even more expensive.
I mean, it looks like, I see the map now, and it looks, it looks like they would have to be down in the middle of the road to make that happen.
Sure. Did you go back, did you say they were going to tear down the existing garage or not?
They are not. I mistakenly, I must have made the assumption when we spoke in preparation for this request that that garage is going to be demolished, but I was corrected, it is not, they're going to leave it.
And then it's still on to it?
Well, no, it'll be a separate structure behind it, kind of more on the center part of the lot.
So now you have two structures.
So the picture on the current garage, they're going to keep that one. And then where would the new garage go?
You're looking at that from the street, it would be to the left of it and further back on the lot.
Okay, so they keep that, and that would be back towards that tree or whatever? Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff?
Eric, biggest lot, so it wasn't had, I couldn't find it on the PVA.
Didn't have that, that might be a good question for the applicant, I don't recall specifically. I'm going to find my application. .57 acres is on the application.
Okay.
So obviously, too small for septic or... Not to mention that our, our sewer use ordinance would likely not allow that anyway, but...
Mr. Cochran, the front looks like it has four garage doors. And a new structure. Is that that? I'm not looking at buildings, I'm not looking at buildings.
It does.
Get to that same...
What's with my package?
There we go. That rendering shows four doors, we haven't reviewed the building submittal itself. That's a good question for the applicant.
Okay, I was just wondering if they were going to put a working repaired garage or what they're going to do with them in the base?
My understanding is it's all personal storage, we've talked about the use of the property and it's residentially zoned, so...
Eric, are there five, one on the side?
I believe on the, in the rendering, there's one on the side and four on the, the long.
Okay.
There's actually one on the other side, too.
Okay.
My mother lives with us.
We need to, we need to...
Yeah, we'll, we'll hear, we'll give you a chance to speak in a minute. So the, obviously, this is not residential. And was there discussion, there was discussion about changing the zoning for...
We never discussed changing the zoning.
Current zoning is residential?
Mm-hmm. And I think, I think my, my personal opinion is I would prefer the modification of standards to allow the residential garage and residential storage rather than try to shoehorn it into some non-residential zoning, which then could lead to an auto body shop or something that really doesn't need to be in that location. Even though all of those things would also require hookups to sewer and water, so it would be unlikely that somebody, I mean, it, which takes you back to why you don't do that.
Okay, so in your opinion, being a residential zone and we have a garage here, what kind of uses could be, just for storage or for other types of...
For personal storage. If they ever got sewer service or water, they could potentially fit up a part of it for a dwelling unit. Otherwise, the only other thing we would likely allow would be any home occupations that meet our requirements, but auto repair, for example, is prohibited as a home occupation. So it would have to be, yeah, one of those accepted home occupations, but otherwise, it, it can't be used as a commercial piece of property.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you. You're from the applicant now.
I was just going to answer that question.
All right. Please.
If you want me to answer.
No, neither.
Oh, okay, I was going to say, my mother lives with us, so between me and my husband and my mother, we have four vehicles. So we each have our own and we have a truck. And so that's the four cars, it's to park our cars in. The other ones is because we have two trailers and a tractor, because we used to live out in the country. So those would be pulled in the garage using those other doors in front of our cars. And this is to get all of our stuff out of the lot, it'll look much nicer, and our cars will be protected as well as our equipment, which is expensive.
I think that clarifies a lot.
So there's four doors for vehicles going in the front, and then there's the door on the end, and another door on the end, so the trailers can be pulled all the way through and you don't have to be trying to back up pulling a trailer. And a pedestrian door to just walk in and out of.
Any questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak about this case? All right, I don't see any. I think we're ready to move on. Anybody want to take a crack at a motion on this? What's that?
Does anybody else want to do this?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm welcome to, if anybody wants to give Mr. Lusher a break.
Let me just wrap this up. I'd like to make a motion to, in public testimony, and to adopt a staff report and to adopt the findings from staff as findings of fact.
Okay, and actually, I don't think we need findings of fact on this. I think, I think we can move towards a yea or nay.
Then I'll amend that to no findings of fact and to recommend approval of the zone map amendment from, where am I, at Hawkeegan? As it's reading, sorry, I'm in the, the approval of the... of the modification of standards of Article 15.022 of Franklin, Frankfurt zoning ordinance to allow for the extension, enlargement, and relocation of nonconforming use.
All right, so we have a motion for approval. Mr. Stewart, second.
I'm second.
All right, Ms. Johnson, second there. Is there any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing done. Call a roll, please.
Mr. Lusher?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Sanderson?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Chairman Swager?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Do we have any other business anyone needs to bring up at this point? All right, hearing done. I look forward to seeing everybody next week for our work session and motion to adjourn. Second. Motion second. All, all in favor, say aye. All right, we're done.